Welcome to the Brevard County Commission meeting. On this, the 52nd day of the year, February 21st, which means you only have 313 days left to get all the things done you have planned for 2017. And for those that are fans of TV soaps, I got a good one for you. You might be curious to know that the very first TV soap opera was called "A Woman to Remember", and it was broadcast on this day way back in 1947. And no, Mr. Barfield, I was not born yet. Okay, this meeting will come to order. We'll have our invocation. District two?
Yes, it's my pleasure to introduce a very good friend of mine, Reverend Jarvis Walsh from the Real Church. And we go good ways back, so Reverend, please come on.
All right. Good morning, everyone. Our great county manager has already told me not to pray too long, so you don't have to worry about that. Eternal God, our Father, we thank you for your loving kindness and your multitude of tender mercies. We give your name the praise today, for you are worthy to be praised. I pray for this great county. I pray, God, as we are in transition, God, as Joshua was in transition from Moses' leadership, I pray, God, that as you have blessed our county with great leadership, that you would continue, God, to work on the chemistry in our county as well as the competency, God. I pray, Father, that you would protect our people, that you would keep us safe, that you would keep us protected, God, that this county would continue to grow and move forward. God, I pray a special blessing for our outgoing county manager, God, that you would continue to bless him in every endeavor. I pray, Father, for whosoever coming up next, whoever you have in place, that all things would be well. Bless everything today. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir. And the pledge? He's doing the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Our first order of business is the approval of minutes from January 24th, 2017. Can I have a motion to do so, please?
So moved.
We have a motion by Commissioner Barfield, second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Pritchett. Anyone wish to vote no? Passes 5-0. Okay, we'll move into resolutions. Our first resolution is recognizing Space Coast Area Transit Vehicle Operator Anne Burnick. Who's doing that? You're up.
I apologize. I'm happy to read the resolution. Whereas Anne Burnick has worked for Brevard County in the Transit Services Department for 31 years, she is an invaluable asset to the department and an excellent representative for Brevard County employees. And whereas Anne is a graduate of the county's Executive Leadership Institute, and her department file is full of extra mile awards, customer compliments, and recommendations. During her tenure, she was named Space Coast Area Transit's Driver of the Month, Community Services Employee of the Quarter, and Space Coast Area Transit's Driver of the Year. She has won the local bus rodeo multiple times and represented the county at 10 state rodeos and six national bus rodeos. And whereas Anne has spent countless hours volunteering in the community with Florida Tech's Women Crew Team, Camera Club of Brevard, serving on the Indy Atlantic's Code Review Board, and was Space Coast Honor Flight as a Veteran Guard Escort. And whereas the Florida Commission for the Transportation Disabled was created to ensure the availability of efficient, cost-effective, and quality transportation for transportation-disabled citizens in Florida, and has chosen to recognize one driver from Florida's 67 counties to be named as its Driver of the Year. And whereas Anne was named as the Commission for the Transportation Disadvantaged 2016 Driver of the Year for a dedicated service to the community, and now for, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, does hereby express its congratulation to Anne Burnick on her accomplishment on being named as the 2016 Commission for the Transportation Disadvantaged Driver of the Year, done, ordered, and adopted in regular session this 21st day of February 2017.
I'd like to make a motion to that be approved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Anyone wish to vote no? Passes 5-0. Congratulations.
Not trying to take over, they're all making me talk. Anne has been with us since 1985. She's actually one of the three remaining Brevard Transit Authority employees, worked for us in the county. Joe at our department enjoys, works at the House of Human Services. But I met Anne my first day on the job as an intern. She's been a leader to all the drivers, leader to all the customers. She's out there in the community. She helps the Indy Atlantic. And then Anne drives a pair of transit route. She's the, you are the senior driver, so she gets first pick of whatever service they do, and that's what she chooses. She takes care of the folks that are transportation disadvantaged. And Anne's there, we can rely on her for anything, wherever we need. So it's quite appropriate that she's named. We're quite honored that, for her, and happy for her.
Okay, now it is my honor to proclaim March 2017 as Irish-American Heritage Month. Whereas by 1776, nearly 300,000 natives of Ireland had emigrated to the American colonies and played a crucial role in America's war for independence. Whereas at least eight signers of the Declaration of Independence were of Irish origin. Whereas 18 presidents have proudly proclaimed their Irish-American heritage. And whereas in 1892, Irish-born James Hoban provided the architectural plans for the White House and served as one of the supervising architects for the construction of the Capitol. Whereas Irish-born Commodore John Barry was recognized by the United States Congress in September of 2002 as the first Flag Officer of the United States Navy. And whereas the same Captain John Barry fought the last sea battle of the Revolutionary War right off the coast of Florida. Whereas in 1942, all four of the Sullivan brothers made the ultimate sacrifice for democracy and freedom during the naval battle of Guadalcanal when their ship was sunk. And they later had the destroyer USS Sullivan commissioned in their memory. And whereas the Irish first came to Spanish La Florida in the 1500s, first as missionaries and mercenary soldiers, and then as planters, traders, businessmen, doctors, and administrators. Whereas Irish-Americans have provided leadership in the political, business, and religious areas of the nation since its inception. And whereas the ancient order of the Hibernians, a national, state, and county organization was established to enhance Irish-American heritage and is comprised of over 200 members throughout Florida and this community. And whereas it is fitting and proper to celebrate the rich cultural heritage and the many valuable contributions of Irish-Americans. Wait, I really found this up. I should have been wearing this the whole time I read this. Sorry. Okay, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, does hereby proclaim the month of March as Irish-American Heritage Month, done, ordered, and adopted in regular session this 21st day of February 2017. I so move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Anyone wish to vote no? It passes 5-0. Would you gentlemen like to come up and say something?
I like, no, we are the ancient order of Hibernians.
Yeah, I'm getting to be pretty ancient myself.
You gotta work on it. That's a great caveat on it.
My sister's right.
There we go.
Hey, would you gentlemen like to say something?
Okay.
About the Irish parade coming up?
Oh, yeah.
Ladies and gentlemen, first of all, I'd like to thank the county boards for recognizing the Irish-American Month. We put a little parade on every year down in Melbourne. This year it'll be on the 18th of March, the day after St. Patrick's Day. So you'll have a whole day to get warmed up for the parade. And after that, we'll have a grand time of it. And we appreciate all the support that we've been getting from the county all over the years. And I thank you very much for your interest and your concern. And they're all invited to participate in the parade. We're gonna leave a spot there for you, and you'll be glad to have you. And if you find another shop over like that, you're home free. Hey, you wanna give them a little Notre Dame there, Red?
Yeah, we just want to thank you very, very much here. And keep doing, keep going, huh? My father used to be in Congress for 25 years. And I used to deliver the newspaper to Franklin Delano Roosevelt every Monday and every Friday mornings when I was a page boy up in Washington. That was some day. It sure was. The Fighting Irish, keep 'em going, huh?
Thank you, gentlemen.
We'd be glad to have you at the parade.
I'll be there. This'll be my third year in a row.
Good. We'll have a great stand for you this time.
Okay, our next resolution will be recognizing librarian Diane Leary upon her retirement after 34 years with Brevard County.
Thank you very much. Resolution: Where Diane Leary, Youth Services Librarian at the Melbourne Beach Public Library, has chosen to retire from Brevard County Government on January 20th, 2017. And whereas Diane began her career with Brevard County in October 1982 as a clerical assistant at the Satellite Beach Public Library in the Youth Services Department, where she quickly became a crucial member of the team filling in for children's librarian during staff shortages. And whereas Diane transferred to the Youth Services Department at the Melbourne Public Library in 1988, where she served with distinction for 14 years, during which she was promoted three times. And whereas Diane was promoted in 2002 to Librarian One, supervising the Youth Services Department at the brand-new Melbourne Beach Public Library, and has served in this capacity for the past 14 years. And whereas Diane is well-respected by not only her colleagues, but also by the parents, and especially by the thousands of children to whom she introduced the joys of reading, working at times with energy, enthusiasm, integrity, and love, truly exemplifying the meaning of public service and dedication. Now therefore be it resolved that the Brevard County Board of Commissioners does hereby recognize, thank, and congratulate Diane Leary for more than 34 years of dedicated public service to Brevard County and wishes her a long and happy retirement with many adventures, done, ordered, and adopted this 21st day of February 2017.
Do we have a motion to accept this resolution?
So moved.
And a second. We have a motion by Commissioner Isnardi and a second by Commissioner Barfield. Anyone wish to vote no? Passes 5-0. Congratulations.
Would Jerry or Jeff want to say a few words?
Hi, I'm Jerry Preeth, Melbourne Library Director. Diane and I worked together for a number of years. And before she even came in the room this morning, I tried to convince her to start a volunteer storytime at the Melbourne Library called Stories from Across the Pond. So she may be retired, but she won't be gone. I love Diane.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jeff Thompson, Library Services Director. I've done many jobs in the library system over my many years, but the one thing I've never done is been a children's librarian. And I can tell you what they do is amazing, amazingly rewarding. They are the ones that teach our children to read, and it's such a great thing. And Diane has had the experience that many of the children's librarians I know have had, which is that the children that they read to years ago come back with their own children to be read by the same librarian. So it's an amazing experience, and I'm deeply grateful for her service. And I'm actually of Scottish heritage, so this evening I will be raising a glass of single malt in Diane's honor.
What do I do with these cards if it's in consent? Just pull them? Okay. Okay, now we'll move on to the consent agenda. Any of these items the Commissioners wish to pull?
Mr. Chairman, we're questioning that we removed from the agenda items 2A17 and 18. We'll bring those back at a later date. That's 2A17 and 2A18.
Okay, we have a request to remove 2A17 and 18. And I have some speaker cards for 2A5, so we'll pull that for discussion. Any others?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to see 2D4 pulled and put on the March 7th agenda. That's got some legal issues that have been raised by the city of Melbourne, which I'd like to address.
Okay. Hearing no objections, we'll pull 2D4 to the March 7th agenda. Any others? Okay. So our first speaker... Oh, okay. Let's vote to approve the consent agenda as is, except for those that we've removed.
Make a motion to approve consent agenda minus 2A17, 2A18, which are being removed, and 2D4, which is being removed, and 2A5 is being pulled for comments.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Barfield, a second by Commissioner Isnardi to approve the consent agenda minus the noted items. Anyone wish to vote no? Passes 5-0. First speaker on 2A5, Randy Burner.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Randy Burner. I live at 2012 Julep Drive, number 208, Cocoa Beach, Florida, Magnolia Bay Condominiums. It's directly adjacent to the Squid Lips property. And I'm here just to ask the board to uphold the decisions that had been made on this piece of property back in December of 16. It seems like we're going through a cat-and-mouse game with the property owner to have the board reconsider the decision that was made in December 16. And I ask that you stay the track, stay the course. What's happened there since the board's decision has been very positive for the neighborhood. Things have gone back to the way it was when it was lobster-shanty, and we'd like to keep it that way. Thank you.
Welcome. Susan Suplee.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Susan Suplee, and I live at 2022 Julep Drive, Unit E306. I stand before you today to reiterate what Randy had mentioned. And I have grave concerns still that the county has not been provided with a site plan for this property. They continue to do work on the illegal structure outside to repair. Also, as a tax-paying citizen, this property is in arrears of $45,000. And I respectfully ask that the commission uphold the decision that was granted in December, as well as put a stop to this nonsense install tactic, and uphold the code of ordinances. Thank you very much.
Sal Bait.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Sal Bait, and I live also at 2012 Julep Drive, Magnolia Bay, unit 105. Before I say anything about that issue, and I'm totally in support of the two previous speakers, the board here rightfully and deservedly acknowledges the achievements and accomplishments of the Irish and the Scottish. But I would like to remind the board that this country was founded by a man from Genoa, and that it was also named after an Italian. So being an Italian-American, I think we should get at least a little recognition there. Now to the merits of this situation. I'm a fairly new resident to Magnolia Bay, but I'm not new at all to Cocoa Beach and the area. I have been coming down here for many years from the northeast. I'm now a permanent resident. And I had tours of duty at Patrick. I associated with many people down in this area. I'm not sure the mic's on. And enjoyed every minute of it, and decided over the years, this is the place to retire to. It was a nice, quiet lifestyle. Quiet is the word, the important word here. Looking at what I've gathered on the evidence of this application, there are regulations and rules which any business must comply with. And this commission, this board imposed certain conditions for this operator known as either Banana Riverfront or, as we know it, Squid Lips. I've also frequented the Squid Lips in Melbourne on the water, and it's a great place if you want to have fun and make lots of noise. And I think that's the concern for the residents here. The conditions that were imposed, there's been no attempt, that I could see, to comply with those conditions, not one. And as the previous speaker pointed out, the gentleman who was the operator is even in tax arrears. So it's not a good situation. Should this go forward in any way, it could devalue the properties, which is of serious adverse impact, as well as the buffering, which has not been done at all. So I also support the previous decision of this board and the prior two speakers. Thank you.
Kim Rosanka.
Good morning, Chairman Smith, members of the commission. My name is Kim Rosanka. I'm with the law firm of Cantwell &amp; Goldman in Cocoa, Florida. I represent Banana Riverfront LLC, also known as Squid Lips Cocoa Beach. I wasn't actually expecting to do a presentation because this really is only allowing Mr. Underill to put his property back to what he bought in 2015. It's very confusing. I received calls from the media. They didn't understand what was going on with this. Basically, as you all may know, after you denied the rezoning, we met with staff and said, okay, what do we need to do? Do we need a demo permit? What do we need to do? And we were told, you need to go back to the 1982 site plan because that's the last thing we have on record. We have no other permits. You guys must prove that you had proper permits. So we went through several renditions of how to do that, and we supplied affidavits, which were not provided to you, from the prior owner saying that he had permits for everything that was built before he sold it, and from the attorney for Mr. Underill when he was buying the property that said, I did my due diligence, I checked. They said it's non-conforming. We can use what we've got. So I'm supplying these for the record. So unbeknownst, apparently, to Magnolia Bay, all we are trying to do is what the commission appeared to want to do back in November of 2015, was to allow Mr. Underill to use what he purchased before he put in the additional dock and before he put in the hardcover canopy. So we are not trying to do anything more than open up what he purchased. Unfortunately, we can't do anything because staff has said they have no records that these permits were actually in place. So unless we are granted the verification of the non-conforming use, Mr. Underill cannot do anything. So regarding the allegations that were made, we can't do anything because, and there are no conditions to comply with. There's nothing that can be done on this property until this process is concluded. So we would ask that you approve the appeal and find that there is a verification of a non-conforming use on this property. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Courtney Yell.
Good morning, folks. I'm Courtney Yell. I live at 2001 Julep Drive in Magnolia Bay. Been there nine years. Love that place. It's beautiful and it's wonderful. I love Cocoa Beach. Been coming here for 30 years before that. What I want to, or actually 15 years before that. And I just want to reinforce the previous speakers that, you know, we love that place. We love Cocoa Beach. We love the quietness. We love the solitude. We love what we have there. We bought it with that in mind. And I just want to reinforce what the previous speakers had to say, that we look forward to a quiet, wonderful lifestyle, if you will. to a quiet, wonderful lifestyle, if you will, where we are now. And thank you very much.
Pleasure, the Board. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, we have Mr. Witten. Okay. Mr. Knox.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to let you know exactly where we are on this. The Board's direction last time that we met and discussed this matter was to bring the property back to the condition it was in when Mr. Underill purchased it back in 2015. The way we attempted to do that was through staff going back and finding the evidence to verify the nonconforming status as it existed on that date. The evidence that was provided wasn't satisfactory to the staff. They couldn't really make that determination. So we are now before the Board on appeal of that lack of determination, which is constitutes a denial. And what this Board is really being asked to do is to reaffirm what it said back the last time we saw this, which is to say that the property is nonconforming as it existed on the date that Mr. Underill purchased it in 2015.
Mr. Barfield.
My biggest concern right now is the fact we have $45,000 in back taxes. And I want to make sure that we actually get those taxes paid at some point here. We, Commissioner Smith and myself, were here at that meeting, and I thought it was very clear that the facility had to be brought back to the original condition it was prior to all the modifications he did. I do have a question for Robin. What's the status of compliance?
We have all, except for one contractor licensing case closed, and we still have the active code enforcement case for the work without permit.
Okay, so again, Mr. Knox. Can we put any requirements with the tax requirements? I mean, based on previous--
Well, I think the tax requirement's going to take care of itself. Either they're going to be paid, or somebody's going to buy the tax deed, and he'll be out of business. So I think eventually that'll take care of itself. In terms of the status of the property, I think there was a survey that was actually provided to us that showed the improvements as of the date that he purchased it back in 2015. And I think that's what you had asked us to get before you somehow, to verify that that's the nonconforming use status. That doesn't include, it does not include the extensions, expansions that he now has on the property, so that still has to be dealt with. And I will point out that the applicant has filed a Burt Harris claim under the mediation portion of the Burt Harris Act, so there is a mediation scheduled on that in the future.
Explain that.
Well, they're basically saying it was not reasonable and fair to deny any opportunity to expand the nonconforming use. So that's the issue we'll be talking about in front of a mediator.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we go ahead and accept as a requested action, verify the 2015 footprint of 2200 South Orlando Avenue.
One second. Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't know you were going to keep reading.
As a legal nonconforming use. Is that the correct motion, Robin?
Yes, it would be.
Okay. So we're going to approve the appeal of the verification of nonconforming use. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And Commissioner Isnardi, you wish to second that?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Barfield, a second by Commissioner Isnardi to approve the appeal of verification of nonconforming use. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? It passes five zero. Okay. Move on to public comments. Charles Tovey.
Charles Tovey, 2555 Roberts Road, Melbourne, 32940. I came up here, excuse me, to disclose the information about the legume because I was in fear for my life, not because I'm going to die. I wanted to disclose the information first. Most of it's done. There are some other remedies that I like to disclose, but for almost a decade now, I've been coming up here asking for help, requesting help, and I've heard this, and I've heard that. And I have a box full of some of the files, the files I could carry up here. I have videotape. I have witnesses. I have evidence, and no one can do anything, nobody will do anything, and they're still destroying the remains and the scrap that you've left me. What is there left for me to do? Well, if I go to court, first I had to struggle for my health, and if I'm not alive, then none of it matters anyhow. Now that I'm over, I'm almost over my pneumonia, now I can stabilize things. And where are we going to? Taxpayer expense? Going to go to court again and go through all this? We don't have to. And there's a negotiation, and attorneys, good attorneys, will do their job not to go to court and to make some kind of deal before they go, because it's all unnecessary. But if we have to do it again, there's nobody left but me, my witnesses, my files, and the public record that I've disclosed over the years. Mr. Witten, you'll soon be leaving. That leaves Mr. Knox, which probably will soon be leaving. I want to provide everybody a copy, but every time I go, my information gets, disappears. So I ride around with it, guarding it with the remains of my life, still asking for help. That's why I'm up here today. Nobody knows nothing. Nobody can do nothing. Nobody has to do anything. But I have to. And if my brake, my flashing light on the back of my bike's not bright enough, I'll get reprimanded if not a ticket. But visibly, out in front of my house daily, there's all kinds of infractions that happens, and nothing happens but to me. Now, when we do these things, we're ripping off our government. And the other thing, they get mail across the street on Monday. Monday's a holiday. They got mail. Why? All these people against me. Who is for me? He shadows me. Thank you, and have a nice day.
You too. Okay, we'll now move into new business. We have a speaker for 6A1, Stephen Zabo.
Thank you for consideration this morning. My name is Stephen Zabo, 1401 Cape Sable Drive. I am a civil engineer representing the applicant, Alex Hendrick, with Hendrick Tire and Motorsports, who owns property in MIMs and would like to develop a tire shop for service and sales. The property is adjacent to US1, but it is setback off of US1 at the corner of Taylor and Davis, and it has residential property to the north and to the west. And the waiver request is to, in lieu of a masonry block wall, which is required by code, to leave a number of existing large oak trees that border the property to the north and the west. And in your package, you'll see there's photographs of those existing trees that are located along the property lines. The applicant is willing to work with the homeowners if they wish to have a privacy fence, such as a six-foot-tall wood privacy fence, and he's been in discussion with the adjacent residents on that. So I'd be glad to answer any questions you all have. Thank you.
Any questions from the Board? Commissioner Pritchett.
I just want to make a comment that I'm thankful that we're doing natural landscape buffer instead of the brick wall, and you've really done your due diligence by getting the surrounding neighbors to sign the waivers and send them in. So I'm supporting this, and I thank you for doing all our work for us that way.
Thank you, sir. Pleasure, the Board.
I move to approve.
Second. We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Pritchett. Commissioner Barfield, seconds. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Passes five zero. 6A2, legislative intent and permission to advertise regarding an ordinance establishing standards for dispensing facilities of medical marijuana treatment centers. Mr. Knox, I would like to have you weigh in on this and give us your thoughts and opinions.
Mr. Chairman, this is an ordinance proposal that is, in my view, a little bit premature. You know, the public passed, or the voters of Florida passed, the Constitutional Amendment authorizing medical marijuana, and it is not a self-executing provision. That means that it doesn't go into effect automatically. It has to be implemented by state law. Legislature has not adopted any law yet to implement it. And there's also a regulation that the Department of Health and Rehabilitation Services is going to have to implement the law that the legislature passes. As consequence, we don't really know what the legislature's going to do. It may preempt any kind of activity by a local government, may not. It may say we can, you can work with location or other matters, but it, we don't know until they actually pass something. So at this point, it seems to me that trying to figure out how far they should be apart, and how many you can have, and how many people can be served by them, it seems a little bit speculative. And even though it's possible the legislature would pass something saying you're preempted unless you have an ordinance passed in Grandfather, it seems to me that the legislature's going to want to do a comprehensive law on this. They're not going to give too much authority to the local government in my, that's my, in my experience with them in these kinds of matters, but that could, you know, who knows what they'll do. And it just seems like we're going through a lot of effort and trying to figure out where, you know, how we're going to put them, and how many feet apart they're going to be, and how many, what hours they're going to be open, without even knowing what the legislature's going to do.
Thank you. Staff, want to weigh in with your thoughts?
We defer to the county attorney on that position.
Well, I want to remind the public that we did instruct you folks to come back to us with some ideas, and that's what you've done. I've talked to a number of people, and what Mr. Knox says is true. We don't know what the state is going to do, but if we get out in front of this issue, I don't see that we're, I don't see that that creates any problems for us going forward. But it does get us out in front of the issue. So that's my thought. Commissioner Pritchett?
Oh, old line.
Okay. And Commissioner Isnardi.
I would have to agree, too. I think there are a lot of things, and I dealt with something similar when I was serving the city of Palm Bay, that had to do with adult entertainment places. And we had to hire, like, an attorney that specialized in adult entertainment ordinances and understanding what the state laws were. And we, you know, we provided, and this is basically for strip clubs. Basically, it was what, I mean, the fancy language calls it adult entertainment. It was for strip clubs. And what we did was we devised, and it took a long time. It took several months. So I do agree that it is important that we get ahead of it, but we have to make sure before we approve something, or at least we need to be open to the idea that we'll have to make modifications, because the state's going to come down with something anyway, regardless of whether or not we put something into place. But I think it's important that we set our home rules down as far as, you know, how many we're going to allow, you know, what the requirements for distance and that sort of stuff. We can kind of look at other municipalities to look and see what they're doing, but I think that, you know, we need to get a handle on it so we don't end up, because if the legislature comes down and says that if you don't have something in place, you know, you defer to this one, I don't want us to be scrambling later, and I don't want us to end up with, like, a red light district of types, you know? And that's obviously not going to be any of our intention either, but I think it's a good idea that we get ahead of it. And if it needs more work, that's okay. I know if it takes an attorney that specializes in that sort of thing, which I consider this similar, at least in aspects of something vitally important, to make sure it's far away from schools, et cetera, then we take a little, maybe take a little more time, because I didn't even know this was coming out until this agenda, that we maybe take a little more time, too, because we may have our own input, or we may be able to look at some other cities and see what they have in place.
Thank you. Commissioner Tobias.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I never thought I would say this, but I think this one with so many moving parts might be the reason we probably should have a workshop where we bring in people that this may impact and ask their opinion. I looked over, spent some time looking over the requirements, and I had more questions than what I did answers. Whether or not your opinion on medicinal marijuana, 71% of the people of the state of Florida have said that they think that this is the right way to go. Now, the federal government may disagree with that, but they haven't done anything to that effect. So the basic questions that I came up, that I came up with is, there were so many regulations here, I don't know how many actual locations would fit the parameters that are located here. You have to be in a certain zoning district. You have to be 200 feet away from residential. You have to be 1,000 feet away from a park. You have to be a mile away from another dispensary. So putting this together, I think, would be extremely, extremely difficult. And I appreciate the work that staff did doing this, but when I asked for the justification on some of these numbers, the responses I got back, and I realized they didn't have very much time to do this, was, because this is what Cocoa Beach does, and because this is what Cape Canaveral. And it's my understanding that a couple of those municipalities are going back to reexamine what they did because of just the very fact that I mentioned. There aren't many places where these can go, and one apparently is in close proximity to Ron John's, which probably is not, you know, the best location for one of these dispensaries. But, you know, a basic question is, is I'm not a medical professional, clearly, but the state of Florida has deemed that this is a prescription-type medication. So if we look at, you know, number three here on operations, we're only allowing them to be open certain days. Imagine if we said that your tooth hurts, and a dentist has written you a prescription, and it starts hurting on a Sunday, and the county has said CBS or Walgreens cannot be open on a certain date. So I, you know, I have issues with the times they're open. I have issues as to there should be no distance, less than a mile, between these. That seems quite arbitrary. Do I want them all over the place, or do I want them in a certain district? I'd certainly like law enforcement to weigh in on this and let us know, you know, if bad things congregated around these businesses, is it easier to patrol where they're spread out, or is it easier to patrol in a congregatory area? I don't know the answer to that. You know, another one, "Five medicinal marijuana dispensaries shall post conspicuous signs on at least three sides of the building stating that no lording is allowed on a property." Well, if you're in a strip mall, and there's a, there is a business on either side of that, then you, by definition, only have a front and back. So, you know, this is not only saying you have to be part of a zone, now you have to be the end of a strip mall. There's just so many moving parts in here. I think that we need some more time to speak freely and openly and get a little bit more. And I appreciate what staff did. I know we didn't give them a whole heck of a lot of time, but I would like to, you know, get some more comparisons to see what's going on. I'd like to speak with some folks that, you know, may potentially are looking at getting into this type of business and see, you know, what is, what may be model legislation so we can get this, what the state of Florida-- so we can get this, what the state of Florida has deemed vital medication to these individuals in a safe, regulated fashion without cutting out anyone's rights. So, you know, if it's, if it's the pleasure of the board to advertise and move forward, that's okay, but I think we need to all spend a lot of time on this before, if that's the direction we go, coming up with some answers to, and these are only questions, I mean, I only looked over this a couple hours, so I imagine that, you know, if we were to spend the time that this is required, we would come up with a lot, we would come up with a lot more. I knew there are some similarities to, you know, adult entertainment, you know, strip clubs, but we can't view this as a negative. The state of Florida now views this as a medication. So we have to take, I voted against medicinal marijuana each and every time it came across my desk in Tallahassee, but voters disagreed with me, and 71% of them said this is a legitimate medicine, so we have to treat it as such. So I think we should do a great deal of diligence. We should get answers to these ones that, you know, better than this is what Cocoa Beach is, or 200 feet sounds good, you know, but if we would identify where some of those locations are and, you know, potentially could be, and we could have some houses that are within, you know, 210 feet that all of a sudden say, well, you know, my kids play in the backyard, and, you know, I can see that. So if we can get a little more clarity on that, because I certainly don't want constituents or folks to come up here and say, you know, you know, had I known all of this stuff, you know, I might have wanted to get involved as you were going through the process. So, you know, again, it's up to the discretion of the board, but I think that there needs to be quite a bit more time that goes into this. And again, I appreciate staff. They did a great job with the time and the information, but this is, this is new stuff, and we need to spend some time on it. So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Chair recognizes Commissioner Pritchett.
I would have rather, if when we did this, it would have been prescribed through a doctor and run through a regular pharmacy, then we wouldn't even have this discussion because it would have been for medical purpose. And that's, that's fine. It's just a whole different type of animal that we're, we're having to figure out how to regulate. My only concern as we do this is, we make sure that it doesn't get in the hands of our children. And since it's new, we've got to figure out what kind of parameters we've got to get up to keep that from happening. But, you know, adults have their, their rights to do what they need to do to take care of themselves or for medical purposes. I'm all good with that. Mr. Knox, how, how long do you think it's going to take for the state of Florida brings down some types of parameters for local government on how we should be handling this?
Well, I think they're working on it this session, so it should be before the summer hits.
Would it might be appropriate for us to maybe, for better words, put this on hold or table it until they come back with some direction, then we can start maybe designing a parameter of what we need to do and the reasons why we're doing it?
Well, I think that's probably, you know, from staff's point of view, certainly working on something that we don't, we're working in the dark on, it's kind of hard.
Yeah.
But, you know, it's possible. The workshop idea may be a good idea if we can get people down from the legislature who know what's going on up there and can give us some idea where they're going, and maybe some, some experts to help us with how these things may or may not work would be helpful. I think that would be very helpful, because we're really kind of working off of other people's ignorance also, because they don't know what was going to happen, even more than we do.
Because I know we've had other states that have done this already, and we had children that lived in Colorado when it started, and it was a mess until they figured out how to do it. So hopefully, we can learn from other states as we move forward also. But I agree. I think we've got to figure out what we're going to do with these, and how many, and what's appropriate to serve our community with protecting our children.
Chair recognizes Commissioner Zarny.
I was just going to add, and I think Commissioner Tobias touched a little bit on it, as far as the workshop goes, you know, one thing that I would like to see also, too, is the, I guess, the projected, a projected map of where these locations would be, again, because we may run ourselves into not having enough locations. So if the state does come down and say you're required to have X amount of dispensaries per 100,000 people or however, I want to make sure that we have those things ready to go. Because I think, you know, as important as it is to go through many of the details, we have to balance getting something in place first. I don't want us with nothing in place, or at least nothing in the works for when we have to start allowing for those licenses for the dispensaries. So that's my concern. I want to make sure that we're on top of it and ahead of it instead of waiting until it's dictated to us with nothing at all in place.
Commissioner Barfield.
Yes, I, you know, there's a whole process that goes through with advertising for legislative intent. Once that happens, it goes to different advisory boards. It goes in through a process that gets reviewed, it gets advertised. I, I just don't want to be on the outside, all of a sudden the state throws down, this is what you're going to do. I would much rather be out front, because I truly believe in home rule more than, more than anything else as far as it's concerned. I'd much rather have us out there, out front, and keep going along with this. I think it needs to be advertised. Once it's advertised, we get much more public input. So I'm all for going ahead and advertising and moving forward. And with that, I'll make a motion that we do that.
Do we have a motion by Commissioner Barfield to accept this proposal?
Could I do a second for discussion?
Okay, we have a second by Commissioner Pritchett.
Mr. Barfield, so you think if we advertise it now, then we can start getting community input, and then I guess after that, if we still aren't ready, we can still table it moving forward as a working document?
Absolutely.
Okay, I could be comfortable with that, because then we could maybe even entertain the option of a workshop, too. But I sure wish the state of Florida would get busy and give us some ideas.
Commissioner Zarny.
I think rather, you know, let's save time, staff time, and a lot of worry by the, by the public. Instead of advertising, I would prefer that we just schedule a workshop. That would be the responsible thing, I think, to do, because in that way, if we do that now, it isn't delayed, and it isn't, you know, misinformation out there to the public and people panicking. And again, I agree with probably most of the members up here. It is considered a medicine. I mean, that's, that's the reality, if you like it or don't. But I think that we need to work quickly, but smart. I think we should schedule a workshop before we put, just throw it on the agenda.
Commissioner Pritchett.
Commissioner Barfield, would you consider maybe we table this for a month, then come back, and then vote to advertising? That way gives us a little longer before we get in a workshop mode to maybe get some more input from the state of Florida.
Well, before you weigh in, let me have, I have something to say, too.
Yes, sir.
This document as presented is not written in stone, so it's, it's very, very malleable. So we're not making any commitment to anything other than to move forward with doing something. I spoke to one of our legislative lobbyists in Tallahassee, Mr. Guy Spearman, several times about this issue, and he feels very strongly that we need to move forward with this, with the full understanding that we're creating a fluid document. But we will have it in place, and so that we would be further along than other communities that have nothing. He also pointed out that 68 communities and counties have already done what we're talking about doing here, and he feels very strongly that we should do something also. So that's, that's his input. I'm, I don't really feel one way or the other that it's critical that we do or don't do anything, but I respect him. I respect Mr. Knox, and so they are on opposite sides, so it's up to us to make some kind of a decision. Mr. Witten.
My, my comments are process comments there. You could simply advertise an ordinance so that you have something to look at in a workshop format. So you could take the ordinance and look at it in the workshop format, and I think that meets all concerns raised here today, because you absolutely need something to look at, even in a workshop format. And so if you continue on with the legislative intent, you just simply take that draft ordinance to your workshop to discuss.
Mr. Tobias?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And my question, and I appreciate the disclosure that you spoke with our county lobbyist, my question is, Mr. Spearman was wearing which hat? Was, would that be the one for Brevard County, or would that potentially be the hat, as he is a registered lobbyist for one of these medicinal marijuana growers or dispensaries? You see, he's, he certainly has some, you know, he certainly has some juice, you know, when it comes to getting this on the board, and that kind of is a, that disclosure that, you know, I might have tried to push in the past, might have helped, you know, you weigh that decision, whether or not he was looking out the best for the county or the best for his other clients. So do you know when he was speaking to you, which hat he was wearing, sir?
I have no idea. And quite frankly, I'm not paranoid to think that people have ulterior motives. The man's our lobbyist, and so I reached out to him for his input and his thoughts, so I don't really care what hat he's wearing. For me, he's our lobbyist. I wouldn't make comment that this is considered, under this ordinance, a medicine, as you pointed out. However, it's not legal, and that's why we can't dispense it in pharmacies, which would be the ideal situation, because then we don't have to worry about it. Then the pharmacy dispenses the medicine, and just like they do all the other medicines, and then they're responsible for it, and we don't have to worry about it. Unfortunately, the states have decided to thumb their nose at the federal government and do what they want to do with regard to this illegal substance. And I didn't vote for it either, but people want it, and so we're faced with and charged with coming up with some way to dispense it. And so we need to do something, whether we do it today or later. I believe we should get out in front of it, but, you know, it's the pleasure of the board, whatever you guys want to do.
Mr. Chairman, I have one more thing to add that might be way against what I said before, but it's something we should be aware of. There is a bill pending in the Florida Legislature which will take away all authority of this board or any other local government board to regulate any kind of business unless the legislature grants them that authority by law. So basically, it takes away home rule power for any new regulations for business. So that is something that would come into play with this, should the legislature pass that, and something that allows or doesn't allow you to do.
So would you suggest that we just postpone this until we, we see what the legislature's going to do, and then act at that time?
Well, I think that's just something you need to weigh in your decision. It may, you know, I'm inbuilt on about whether you do it or don't do it. I just want to let you know that those are things that are going on.
Mr. Barfield?
I have a question. I haven't read that bill, but does that mean if we already have a regulation in place that it takes precedent, or does that mean, you know?
I don't see, I think what it said was, any new regulations. So if there's something in place by the time that they actually pass it, you'd probably be okay, basically on what it reads right now.
So it's important that we maybe move forward to this.
That's why I brought it up.
Any other comments? We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Barfield. Do you keep your second?
I do.
Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Passes 4-1. The opposing vote was Commissioner Tobias. Sure, Commissioner.
I know the item is completed, but, I mean, the board is at least at a consensus that we expeditiously, expeditiously move to workshop on this. I mean, I mean, are we just going to plan on advertising at the next meeting?
Well, again, Mr. Witten, the process would be?
It won't be the next meeting, so, I mean, you're, you have the ethics workshop, you have a budget workshop, and then you have the CRA workshop in April. So I would think that it would probably be a March or an April workshop, if you want me to look for a date, but it's the board's call. But certainly, I don't think we intended on getting back to the, to the next meeting on the item.
We could actually also, you know, crazily schedule a day that we don't normally have a meeting as well. I mean, I know not everybody wants to come in on a day we're not normally scheduled to be here for a commission meeting, but we can also, we also have that option as long as we advertise.
Chair recognizes Mr. Knox.
I'm a little unclear on the motion, too. Was, is the motion to move forward with advertising? Okay. Understand, this is probably going to be falling in the category of a land use, permitted use type of thing, so it's going to require two public hearings in front of the board and one LPA meeting. So it's going to take a while for this to happen.
And I'm sure we can depend on you and your staff to make sure we follow all the steps and jump through all the hoops.
Of course.
Very good. Okay, let's move into except one. Resolution modifying the delegation of community redevelopment powers to municipalities.
Mr. Tobias, would you like to introduce this?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I want to thank you for this, this resolution. I went back and checked prior commission meetings, pulled transcripts, and as far back as October 2015, you stated, and I quote, "You are anti-perpetual CRAs, CRAs that just don't go away, CRAs where they last 20 years, 25 years, 30 years, and they come back and they ask us for an extension." You followed that up on February 9th of 2016, where you mentioned that CRAs, quote, "They never go away." And I agree, and I agree with you, except I wanted to actually take action based on that perpetuation of CRAs and the continuance of the millions of dollars that could go to other places. So staff was very helpful to draft a resolution to that extent. The resolution is much simpler than the, the previous one, and Mr. Knox can speak to this, but my understanding is CRAs have the ability to extend past their initial sunset date without the acceptance of this board. So all this resolution does is say, before a CRA does that, they must come to the board for us to enter into an inter-local agreement allowing them to extend. So they just, just to get our permission, this is not precluding anyone from extending. This is just saying, CRAs, please come to us. And I'm looking at this right now of the current CRAs out there, and it looks like, you know, this isn't, this would be a long time before this even happens, you know, 2022, but recall that they don't have to come to the end of that sunset period, it's my understanding, before they do actually go ahead and extend. So again, all this does is say, before you grab another 30 years to clear blight, please come to us, and because you are using funds that do come out of our general fund, please come to us, and let's discuss it in an inter, inter-local agreement. And that is all this resolution does, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Commissioner Zarny.
I didn't hit the light. That was actually from last time, but I do want to comment on that.
See, I did that.
I would agree with this ordinance, and also, too, I had had, and it's not, it's not on this agenda, because I firmly believe that, you know, and I know it's not necessarily anybody's intention to make Sally crazy by adding things to the agenda. It was a little bit late, and there was a lot of add-ons, and I prefer there not to be any excuse why any of us didn't have enough time to do it. But it sort of is similar to this ordinance. At least it has the same intent, and so I would be in support of this. And just as a heads up, my next item on the next agenda is going to have to do with something very similar, but yet different. I don't know. I'm not trying to be mysterious. I just don't want to, I don't want to confuse the issue with this one, but it's, but I think it serves this similar purpose, so I'd be supporting this.
Mr. Knox, would you like to weigh in at all?
Yeah, this is a simple resolution that would, I would guess, modify or revoke the authority of the cities and the CRAs that have that authority to pass an amendment to their CRA plan, which is what triggers another 30 years of existence, and to, in any way, expand the boundaries of that CRA.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Pritchett?
I wouldn't mind this. We were working on one also for an inter-local agreement, so I wouldn't have a problem with this, but we did give everybody the word out there we were going to wait and do any of this to after workshop in April, and therefore, just so all the CRAs didn't have to show up today, concerned that we were discussing the topic again. And we made some calls, and we don't feel like anybody's currently working to expand or create new ones right now. So I think this can wait to workshop, and I think in all fairness to our constituents and people out there that have to work these projects, I think we should take this to workshop. That would be my request.
Commissioner Barfield?
She stole my thunder.
She stole my thunder. Yeah, I was going to say the same thing. I believe this needs to go, we need to look at CRAs overall. We need to look at all different aspects. And I think we should just do it all in a workshop, when all the CRAs can be here. And I think that's what I would like to do, is table it to the workshop.
Any other comments?
Yes.
Commissioners Nardi?
Just a quick comment. The reason why I don't take issue with this resolution is its simplicity, is the fact that CRAs are designed, by their mere design, designed to never go to 30, I mean, beyond 30 years. So I think that this simple request that we hold those municipalities or even the CRA itself to account to those 30 years is not a stretch. I mean, it's just not. Because if there is an issue, or if they're going to go to 31 years, for example, all they would have to do is come back to the board. So I have no problem supporting this, because it is a very simple thing that we can do now until we have that workshop, because that workshop's not for a good while.
Commissioner Barfield?
I don't really have much trouble with it either. The thing is, I just would like to have, look at everything in its, you know, altogether, look at everything together in the CRA, because there may be other wording we want to do something else that would also, we could mold into it or whatever. I just would much rather do it all at once. Again, where everybody could be there.
Commissioner Pritchett?
I'd like to make a motion to table the workshop.
Second. Okay, we have a motion to table this issue until the workshop. We have a second by Commissioner Barfield. Any further discussion? I would like to weigh in. I'm 100% in favor of this. This is something that I've been talking about, preaching for a long time. CRAs, contrary to some people, I do recognize the need for a CRA, but I also recognize the need for the County Commission to exercise its due diligence in watching over, being the watchdog, guiding the CRAs, having more input on how they perform. I don't think anybody, that's, let me take that, I'll walk that back. There are an awful lot of people that aren't crazy about $6,000 palm trees being used to decorate an entrance to a highway. So maybe with more control, more insight, more input from the County Commission, those type of things won't occur in the future. And maybe there's a good reason that you have a $6,000 palm tree, although I can't think of one off the top of my head. But at the last, whenever we discussed this, when we did have some of the municipalities here, I somehow, and I don't know the exact wording, I strongly advise them not to go forward with trying to, or to try to extend their CRA by creating any kind of debt. I trust them. They trusted me. I do trust people. I'm not paranoid. I don't think everybody's out to stick you, or stick me, or be dishonest. I trust people until they give me a reason not to trust them. So with that in mind, I trust the CRAs to not encumber themselves with more debt and saddle the people of this county with longer periods of their being extended, their time being extended. So for that reason, I would vote for this to be tabled as well. I don't think we have any fear of this backfiring on us. And certainly in a workshop, we can discuss all of these matters, have input from the other side, and then we can vote and make an intelligent decision at that time. So we have the, we have the motion made and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Passes 3-2. Nay votes would be Commissioners Nardi and Commissioner Tobias. Move into public comments. We have one. Sandra Carwell?
Hello, my name is Sandra Carwell, and I live at 1142 Bianca, Palm Bay, Florida, 32905. On November 8th, the Palm Bay Police, along with the Brevard County Sheriff, even though I did not see them, they did not talk to me, and they did not do any kind of service to me, rammed my front door, broke it down, and arrested me for living in my home, warranty deeded home of 48 years. Then 14 days later, trespass arrest was dropped by the state attorneys as a no information. I watched, along with four other witnesses, why the Palm Bay Police, under Steve Scheidel, took items from my home and put it into a private citizen's, Robert Limkey's, vehicle. They stole my laptops, they stole my jewelry, IDs, credit cards, cash, purse, heirlooms, jewelry, my, all valuables from a three-bedroom, two-bath, and two-car garage home, fully loaded of two legacies of a family, right, because I inherited the house, everything. By the next day, the house was completely empty. Everything was emptied from the house. I had addressed this city council on December 6th. I had got back with Scott Knox, right, and I had a conference with him. He said he was going to collect information and get back with me. I called repeatedly back to his office. He said that he had collected the, or his office said he had collected the information and would get back with me. I called repeatedly again, and somehow I have not got any communication back from Scott Knox. So I was wearying with that. As you can see right here, this is a copy from Senator Bill Nelson. This is a copy from Senator Marco Rubio. This is a copy of the U.S. Department of Justice. This is an email of Florida Representative Randy Fine, asking, right, for the Sheriff's Department of where my property went to. Because if I was arrested on one thing, right, then that property that they took should have been turned into evidence, because it was an arrest. It was supposedly a crime. Whatever else is claimed happened, the idea was it still belonged to my home, and then my warranty deed has never expired. Okay? And I'm still asking, which I did, I filed a public records request with the Sheriff's Department, right, and haven't found out what happened to my property. And like you said, I'm here with Scott Knox to address him of, you know, I met with you, you said you were going to collect information, you said you would get back with me. I've called your office numerous of times. Your office said that they had collected the information, and that was it. So I'd like to have, from Scott Knox, you know, an answer to, you know, what happened to the collection of information that you got and that you were going to get back with me.
Yeah. The information I have is that thick. So it's going to take me a while to finish it. I'm going through it, but I'm going through it carefully. I'm trying to determine whether or not the county's got any exposure. That's primarily what I'm interested in, because of the way things happened. And when I get finished with that, I'll let you know exactly what I found out. And I'll get you a copy of everything I've got.
Okay. And in the meantime, everything that I own was stolen from me, everything. I mean, like, we, I want you guys to all absorb, including John Tobias, which was, I believe, a representative, to understand that the law enforcement, two agencies in Brevard County, rammed into my house and stole everything that I and my sister owned. The day after, the only thing I had, right, was a pair of jeans and a t-shirt, and I didn't even have my shoes, or my glasses, or my cellphone. They stole everything, everything that everyone, when you guys go back home, and you think that your closets, your pants, your shoes, your tops, right, your silverware, your bed sheets, your bed, your dresser, your washer, dryer, they stole everything. I, they stole everything. And there was two law enforcement agencies, Palm Bay Police, Brevard County Sheriff. This is asking the FBI, right, to investigate, right, and confirmation on these letters that they are investigating. That's how significant and serious this is, to have two law enforcement agencies break into your home and steal everything without a warrant, without a warrant, right? And I'm still waiting, like you said, Scott Knox says he's still working for it. But the idea would be, is, you know, where do I go to get solutions or answers to my stolen property, which of course should be with the Sheriff's Department? But of course, I've gotten no response from the Sheriff's Department.
Well, we'll look into that.
All right. And I will continually be back, right? I'm still addressing. And as you know, right, I have a website up that I'm documenting. I'm also on LinkedIn, right, and all the other, every social media. And I am determined, right, to get this to a public awareness platform, to understand two law enforcements, that I have lived here since I was 10 years old, since 1968. I have lived here. I grew up here. I went to school here. I even ran for Palm Bay City Council. And two law enforcements rammed into my door and thought they could come in and steal everything, silverware, pans, you know, dressers, antiques, collectibles, photographs. They stole everything from me and my sister. Thank you very much.
Thank you for that input. Okay, moving into board reports. Mr. Whitton?
Mr. Knox?
Just a reminder that we have an executive session after the meeting, and you have that thing you have to read.
I do. Commissioner Barfield?
Yes, I'd like to thank Robin DiPavio. This is, I guess, her last meeting, isn't it, Mr. Whitton?
Yeah.
You forgot. I had to take care of you. No. Thank you. It's been great working with you. We wish you the very best. You've done an excellent job, at least while I've been here. So, and we just wish you the best. That's it.
Commissioner Tobias?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. During Citizen Advisory Board appointments, there was an issue that was brought up with one of my appointees. And I, in an abundance of caution, pulled that because I was waiting for a legal interpretation of what Brevard County Code set. And as somebody that has spent zero days in law school, I asked Mr. Knox's office to come up and give me a solution or be an explanation of the requirements for zoning board of adjustment. As soon as I received that, I sent that out to my fellow commissioners. Hopefully, you got a copy of it. And on the back, the memo is dated February 15th. As soon as I got it, I sent it out. It looks like it was done by Ms. Berrios, the Assistant County Attorney. She makes three, she gives three options to resolve the matter that I brought up. And my suggestion moving forward would be to go with the option that she found, not that she came up with it was the best. It says, quote, "Knowing that often challenged to find members to sit in volunteer boards of county attorney's office recommends option one. Option one says the board could amend Section 62212A. Brevard County Code of Ordinance to Grant Commissioners at Large Appointments must be still approved by the Board of County Commissioners." So I just wanted to clear this up for, you know, future commissioners as well as us. So my suggestion would be to go with the recommendation of, the recommendation of county staff. But I would be, you know, I'm open to other alternatives, but I just wanted to get this out because of Sunshine. This, I think, is the proper forum to discuss, to discuss this. So that would be, you know, I was told that this was the proper place to bring it up. So I would like to get some ideas on this.
Commissioner Barfield?
On a board of adjustments, I actually have been on the board of adjustment before for a city. And what you do is you go out, you need to go out and look at the areas. You need to look specifically at properties for variances or whatever. I like the way this is written. I think it needs to stay where you're in that area. Because, for instance, if you have someone that's supposed to be District 1, and they live in District 5 or District 3, that really makes it kind of tough to actually go look at the property or, it's just a challenge. So I think it's, and the fact that you live in that area makes a lot more difference, too, because you really know what's going on. I like the way it is. Just, I think you need to be in that area. This is one of those areas where, and I remember all the different little things from a variance, because someone, you know, need an extra foot or something in their property, and you have to go out and look at it. So I'm just leaving it alone. I'm for leaving it just the way it is.
Commissioners Nardi?
We have to appoint several dozen people to boards. And it just so happened that the one board that they looked at, my appointee, happens to be from a distant, different district. Now, he was a previous appointee by a previous commissioner, by Commissioner Anderson. And to remove him now, because he doesn't live in my district, you know, I've, and this is, again, and I think I've said it before, we represent the entire county. And where you may have a board, Board of Adjustments, for example, where it may be an exception to where you should have somebody in the district, I think that, just by the mere fact, you want volunteers on your board. And I don't want myself and staff to try to beg someone to be on a board. I'd rather have a citizen who's willing to step forward and serve on those boards. So I think that they need to be at large positions. And I know a lot of other places that are moving toward that way, because we have a lot of slots to fill. And I want people enthusiastic about serving on the boards. So I'd be open to making them at large, as the county attorney suggested, Assistant County Attorney suggested.
Pleasure, the board?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a motion to direct staff to make the recommended change for the next meeting to bring to, to a vote.
Okay, so you're, yeah, it's option one. Okay. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner, yes?
I, we've been trying to find people to fill positions. And right here, the Board of Adjustments, we only have a primary. We couldn't find an alternate, because we don't have one that would be a good fit from our district right now. So I almost don't mind the at-large. I think we should do our best. I don't know if we could write it into there that it would be for us to do our best to try to find someone for our district to fill the positions. But I think what we really need to do is find someone with the best fit to fill these boards. So I don't mind it coming back for discussion. I'm going to have to take some time really thinking through it, though, as we move forward. I didn't know it was a resolution that would be in your district, because I, too, have some that were grandfathered in that aren't in my district, but they're good fits on board. So I have a little conflict inside of me right now, too, with this proposal of not going forward or going forward, so.
Mr. Knox, do we need a motion to go forward with this?
Yeah, if you have staff direction to prepare an ordinance amendment that...
Right. So do we need a motion to give staff direction?
It would help me.
Okay, very good. So, Mr. Tobias, you want to formally?
Yes. I'd like to have a motion to direct staff to make an amendment to the ordinance with the staff recommendation to option one.
Do we have that? Girls? Got, okay. Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, we have a second by Commissioner Pritchett, motion made by Commissioner Tobias. A little backwards there. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Passes 4-1. Commissioner Barfield being the nay vote. Board report, Commissioner Nardi.
Thank you. Just two things. I had the pleasure of attending the Builders Roundtable. And I have to thank Stockton and staff and all of the people that showed up for that meeting. I really enjoyed it. And, you know, as a, as somebody who's, you know, now in the office, I hear some of these complaints, one-on-one, and it was neat to see staff rationale for why we have some of the things in place that we have in some, also areas where we're able to work better with them, to say, well, why do we have this in place? But I just want to appeal to this commission, if it's okay with you guys, because it is something I'm very impassioned about, about, you know, smart government, smart growth, to sort of remain active as the active commission member on this board. Obviously, it doesn't grant me any authority, but only one of us can be there. And with Stockton leaving, I want the board to sort of, I guess, approve the initiative to keep these round tables in place and to sort of, you know, allow me to be the liaison for the board, so we can fix some of the things that are cumbersome to people that want to grow their, either residential developments, or commercial, or otherwise. But if that's okay with you guys.
Mr. Whitton, you have any thoughts on that?
Yeah. You know, it's the county managers...
Yeah, you know, it's the County Managers Developers Roundtable, and so it's just, it's an informal gathering of developers and staff, so that they can, can come in and literally beat us up on the code, and so it's an open dialogue back and forth. If commissioners want to attend, I'm okay with that. If more than one commissioner wants to attend, you just got to give us advance notice. We do them quarterly, so we'd have time to advertise the meetings there. Obviously, you know, as you're searching for your next county manager, I would implore you guys to make sure that that person is intended on maintaining that open dialogue there. But it's no problem with one commissioner coming, or all commissioners, if they want to, just give us advance notice, and we'll make sure we, when we're advertising it, or we'll make sure we do an advertisement for it.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. Okay, and my board report.
Wait, I have two things.
Okay.
I just want to mention that we are moving the office this week, finally. As you know, and as we discussed briefly in the commission, you know, one of the things that Commissioner Anderson wanted to do while he was here, but, you know, he served also at a time where the fiscal situation was rough, and he had, he was getting pulled from both directions on trying to more centralize the office to the District Five area. So what we've done, and staff, thank you so much for your time and effort, is we found a place under market value that was able to relocate us to the middle of the district, and we are at the border of West Melbourne and Palm Bay, so kind of close to the highway, close to an exit, more easily accessible, just outside of Lockmar, so I'm sure Lockmar residents will be thrilled, because they're a very engaged part of the community in Palm Bay. We are moving this week, so it's going to be a little rough in the office as we transition our telephone system, IT. So it's, we're going to try to either forward our telephones, if there is a lapse of about one to two days, but there shouldn't be, staff's been on top of it. But I wanted to give you, our new location is going to be 490 Center Lake Drive. And if you remember the, the old black, I think, believe it was a Mima building, or an Omni building, when you get off the highway at Palm Bay Road, that's where we're going to be located. Our phone numbers will all be the same, of course, and again, the transition's going to be very quick, it just may get a little muddy for a couple of days in the office as far as returning phone calls or emails, but we will do our best to serve everyone. And I want to thank Facilities for being so wonderful in making this happen, and IT, and Frank, and, I mean, everybody's been absolutely wonderful and very patient. So just be patient with us. We're working, again, this is for the benefit of the public, and hopefully, everything will go smoothly over the next few days.
We're good now?
That's good. I told you two things.
Okay. Okay. I just produced a handout to each of the commissioners, and there's a picture of a tiny house. And this apparently is becoming an issue. I know it is in my district. I don't know if you folks have had any occasion to field any of the complaints or not, but we've had them showing up in different properties around my district. One was even on a trailer, and they had it, they had people living in it, and they had an extension cord running from the house into this thing. We currently don't have any code to address these things in people's backyards, and I think it's something that we need to look, look at and look forward, where we're going to go with it. So I would like to task the Planning and Development Department to investigate this issue, and come back to us with some kind of an amendment to our codes that would cover these things, and restrict them from being used. I don't know if we could even restrict them from the backyards. I don't know what those codes would be. I would assume it's similar to a motorhome in a backyard, and those are sometimes regulated in homeowners' associations. But in any case, I don't think it's a good idea that we have these things popping up in people's backyards, and people can move into them. So that would be my direction. So I have an announcement that I must read at this point.
Mr. Chair, before you do that, would you allow me a moment to redeem myself with Robin Di Fabio?
Yes, me too.
And I apologize for forgetting that this was our last meeting, and Robin has been with the county, I think, 19 years, and prior to, prior to coming to Brevard County, she was with Miami Dade, and so has a lot of years in local government, and really one of the toughest areas, and one of the most time-consuming areas. You know, if you're not working on budget development as a board, you're working on planning and zoning, and so she's done a great job over her 19 years, and has been committed to being fair to all of the applicants, and has worked on some very tough issues. And so, you know, I hate to see her go, but I know she's ready to move on with the next chapter of her life, and so we wish her well.
I would like to say ditto. You've always been pleasant to work with, and whenever I had a question, you had answers, and you've been very professional in every step of the way that we've dealt back and forth. And if you came here 19 years ago, I'm guessing you came right out of college. So I wish you well going forward, and thank you for your service. Okay, moving right along. As authorized by Section 286.011, subsection 8, Florida statutes, the Brevard County Board of County Commissioners will now commence private attorney-client meetings for the purpose of discussing settlement negotiations and/or strategy related to litigation and expenditures in Brevard County versus B West Townhouses Meadowbrook LLC, Trade Winds Plaza LLC, et al., 052013-C-A-025677. Try saying that fast. The names of the persons attending the attorney-client private meeting will be Rita Pritchett, County Commissioner, District One, Jim Barfield, County Commissioner, District Two, John Tobias, County Commissioner, District Three, Kurt Smith, County Commissioner, District Four, Christine Nardi, County Commissioner, District Five, Stockton Witten, County Manager, Scott L. Knox, County Attorney, Eden Bentley, Deputy County Attorney, Margaret Eddie Sheffield, King Reporting Services, Inc. The attorney-client private meetings will be held in the County Managers Conference Room, third floor of Building C, at the Brevard County Government Operations Center, 2725, Judge Fran Jamison Way, Viera, Florida. The estimated length of the attorney-client session is one hour or less. I will now entertain a motion to temporarily adjourn and reconvene in the County Managers' Conference Room. We have a motion by Commissioner Barfield.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Pritchett. Anyone wish to vote no? Passes 5-0. I will now adjourn, entertain a motion to adjourn the private attorney-client meetings. Oh, that's when we get upstairs. Okay, we're done.
The opinions expressed by any member of the public during any period of public comment do not necessarily reflect the views or opinions of the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, Space Coast Government Television, or the program sponsor, and are solely those as a presenter. The Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, Space Coast Government Television, and the program sponsor hereby expressly disclaim any and all responsibility or liability for any defamatory or slanderous statements expressed by any member of the public during any such period.